Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the planning and zoning board meeting. Can I ask you to please rise and believe in the flag? I'd like to believe in the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, June.
Lee Hammer.
Yes.
Dickinson.
Yeah.
Gushen.
Here.
Pachowski.
Here.
Fullerton.
Here.
Alberly.
Here.
Daley.
Here.
Mary.
Mary C. Paulson is excused.
John Rehner.
I've not heard Mr. Paulson.
Mrs. Dennis is excused. Benella.
Here.
Rowan.
Here.
David Crick.
Here.
Ethan.
Here.
Thank you. Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Apology Act has been given by the clerk in the following manner: posted on the bulletin board in the clerk's office, an email to the retrospect and the courier post. First word of business would be approval of the minutes from the November 10 meeting. Is there a motion on the floor? Mr. Dickinson, second of Mr. Opely. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. First order of business will be a resolution memorializing preliminary and final site plan for JMD, JMS, block 60, block 2 and 3. Mr. Rowan?
Yes, this was a resolution approving, an approval made by the S.P. for 113, 127 West Clemens Bridge Road, block 60, lot 4, 3 and 2 regarding a proposed driveway easement. That matter was handled by Mr. Carl O'Beir, but I believe he sent that in. Do you need a copy or do you have a copy?
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Yep. Any questions on the resolution, motion to approve? Roll call, please. Both we have completed the motion. Mr. Dickinson and Mr. Pachowski. Roll call, please.
Lee Hammer.
Yes.
Dickinson.
Yes.
Alberly.
Yes.
Gushen.
Yes.
Pachowski.
Let's stand.
Fullerton.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Next order of business is an application for Wawa.
Good evening.
Thanks, Sarah and Horstky.
I'm here on behalf of Wawa Inc. Our property is located at 825 North Black Horse Pike. I believe you're all familiar with the properties, existing Wawa convenience store and fueling station. What we're here reporting tonight asking for is one seed variance, two add-ons of the site, and eight foot high ten-foot shed in the back portion of Wawa. We're looking for the shed. We had recently done an interior renovation, which resulted in less space to store things with the salt shovels, which may have taken out of that nature. A walkway would also be included with this that would simply connect the sheds to the existing parking area so that the employees had easy access to it. The variance of this is increasing the current impervious coverage. We were previously renting inverse coverage of 89.5 percent. This is increasing it to 89.7, so it only increases 0.2 percent. I do have with me here tonight an act share of dynamic engineering. The board has any technical questions? Don't worry, your testimony is present, but if I do hear you have a question.
Are you, are you in front of the board? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I mean, frankly, I think the, I think the impervious coverage is de minimis unless, unless David has a different opinion as a, as the engineer. We've discussed it and it's de minimis in our opinion, so unless any of the other board members have any questions regarding, I think we're all pretty familiar with the property. I think it's a, I think it's a positive thing to do, frankly, and to have, and to have stuff hot up all over the place and, and unsecure and, and have a blighting issue, so, David, did you have anything else?
No, we didn't prepare a formal letter because of the activities.
No, I need to.
So routine, no, we really don't have any objection or any comments. It's a very slight de minimis increase in perp surface that really wouldn't affect any drainage structures or facilities, so, and as a matter of fact, there's an inch located right near the shed, so it's not going to even be a situation where we're also going to be traveling across the parking lot, so we have no objection to the, to the grain of the variance.
But Rowan?
Yeah, it looks like it's built, going to be built with in all setbacks and I concur to the de minimis.
Yep. Everyone has a copy of the, of the plans. Anyone on the board have any questions for the professionals or for the attorney? Sarah? All right, well, I guess with that, yeah, we're just going to open the meeting to the public. If anybody in the public has anything to add or question on this application, this application only, and from more, state your name and address, please.
I'm Michael from Clark's.
Next name, Michael. Address, address.
Is it going to be taking up parking?
No, it's not.
Like, 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 I'm sorry, you have to have your address on record.
Oh, I'm sorry, B-15 North Black Horse Pike in Runway.
We know who you are, but it's different for us, isn't it?
Yeah, I understand. Sorry about that.
To answer the question, it's actually located, if you go onto the site now, there's a small patch of, it's kind of landscape land back there, the bushes are dead right now, but there's also a board-on-board six-foot-high fence waiting.
Sarah, do you have a copy of the pen? Can you let me see a copy of the pen? Welcome to the board.
I don't mind.
Would you mind sharing, if I pull a copy of it, just so you can see what, what I can borrow?
Yeah, my, my occasion was such a good ease when I have trucks, everything parked around that fence, and I didn't want to have any more of that.
No, no parking, same thing. The only, to say what goes into condition of the shed, nothing else, just a little landscape here and there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Michael, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Fran T. Markworth, 27 Smithland Avenue, New York City. I'd have to see the plan here, but I have a lot of ground for it, it's also property that's backside against, so if you, the overall site is back, I know you have parking and right here is a tiny landscape area under the board-on-board fence that goes around either side here. We're spending a little bit in here, it's actually going to be, you're not really going to see, so it's just a state bushes landscape here right now, and then so you'll have the fence on the left side of the bushes everywhere. Our property is on the other side of that side. It's only going to store like, correct, it's just salt shovels, basic things for that campsite. It won't be anything big. Whatever we're storing from there is stuff we had previously been storing inside the store. We're not introducing any new equipment or anything of that type, we're just moving it to after, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other votes, please, to speak on this application? Entertained a motion to close the whole portion? Mrs. Gushen, second of Mr. Dickinson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the portion is closed. Mr. Rowan?
Yes, what we're going to be voting on tonight is approval to, I guess it's an amendment to a site plan to approve the construction of a storage shed. Storage shed is within the setback line, so there was no other bulk variance is required. However, the, the shed will cover a little bit more in the lot than, than previously. I think they're going to be covering another 97.39 square feet, which considering that they're covering 59,000, 51,675 square feet currently, it'll be increased to 51,772 square feet. I agree with the end of this, it'll be the minimums of the coverage that's going to be imposed, and I believe the, the board would recommend approval of this plan and variance to, for the minimal increase in, in pervious coverage.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. Is there a motion on the floor of approval of the application as read by Mr. Rowan?
I'm making the motion to approve.
Mr. Pachowski, second?
Second.
By Mr. Benella. Roll call, June, please. June, Mr. Benella will be voting on this if we have a full conference.
Lee Hammer.
Yes.
Dickinson.
Yes.
Alberly.
Yes.
Gushen.
Yes.
Pachowski.
Yes.
Fullerton.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Very nice to meet you. Have a nice holiday. Thanks for coming in. Next application is a use variance. This would normally ask the mayor and the councilmen to step down, but they are put excused this evening, so the seven members will be voting that are seated, and so with that, we'll entertain.
Who's here on that?
The applicant.
The Harding, Harding Avenue?
Yeah, Nine Harding Avenue.
Oh, okay, come on up, folks. I want to swear to you and you'll give testimony, okay? All right, could you please, everybody, right hand? You swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate for the best of your knowledge. Okay, you're going to give your names, your addresses, and then you can impress the point.
I work at Casby.
Most of you work at Casby.
And I live at 716 George Lane, Mandorian, Jersey. Also own the properties nine and nine avenue.
I'm living with her at 716 George Lane.
Okay, who are you, Rowan?
Well, I've owned this property for 25 years, and I'd like to change it over to a residential community in the residential area, and I think I've improved the place, and I feel that it'd be better than having a business there in the residential area, and I'd like to do a turnover and sell the property.
What is the business, what is the business now, ma'am?
It's a, it's a general office right now.
Okay, so there's no business in, in property, as of right now?
Excuse me, wasn't there a moving company there?
Well, just my niece had a temporary company there. They, they bought it home. Prior to that, my husband and
Because we had some problems out there. We're at box trucks parked on the sidewalks, kids had to walk out the street.
Well, that was on him, there was another company right next to that property, there was another company leaving their truck there in my property for today. But then he was blocking all the street. There's another moving company also involved. The guy who works for this company that's across the street is on Nine Harding Avenue. Not Nine Harding, but Nine Harding. Yeah, it was like, yeah, same kind of thing, but he had the property, he had a driver, he parked his truck and drive. There was another company, I remember that. And my husband owned it, and we had a photograph of this business there for years, but he never had the business people coming in and out, but he had it here, and we also supplied property machines here.
Yeah, just show everyone, everyone does it, it's in the R1.
Ready to come?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it is, it is, it is an R1 right now. It's in a R1.
We have a, we have, sorry, I didn't need it, we didn't know.
Yeah, you know, I think the board would like to see
Sure, great.
Have you explained, have you converted it into a residential?
Well, it's always been one.
Okay.
It was 1991. We had two bedrooms, had a kitchen, had a bathroom. Before Ray died, he could sit over there, 28, that was the move.
I think over there, they, all street parking required, I think, right?
We have the photographs too.
Well, presidential?
Yeah.
They have a driveway.
Oh, they have a driveway.
Yeah, we have a driveway.
It was on the board, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, I actually, I took a look at it. It's surrounded by residential problems. Because rear is a, is a parking lot, so multi-family, that comes on Clemens Bridge, right there. It really is more suited for residential.
It's in concert.
Yeah, I don't think anybody would like it at this point in there. And I've, you know, I've had so many, he did what, I was a parent for him, and he would have, he would have Thank you.
Get the words.
What's that?
Yes, second, full conference.
Yeah, I didn't get any comments. Actually, this property, the size that it is, the configuration, it's really more suited for residential, actually, than for commercial or for any type of offshoots.
I agree.
Availability availability for parking, and, but there isn't enough parking for residential use, so I would have to recommend granting a use variance. I think it's more appropriate that it is residential, but the office, general office.
Did we take away the office shoes?
No, the office shoes would still override because that is the zone.
Yeah, they're not, they're not taking that away. They're, they're in a C, you know, G O zoning there, but, so they're not
Not only that building.
Excuse me?
Only that building.
Right, right, so they don't lose that. In other words, if somebody wanted to buy, switch from residential to G O, they could.
But they wouldn't need site plan.
Yeah, then they would need site plan to prove, because they're, yeah.
So you're not changing the footprint of the building whatsoever?
He wants to move in, he wants to move in, he wants to be outside, and I want to give him the building anyway because, you know, he's dad.
Yeah, everyone else on the board, notification?
Yeah, probably. I think when we do our master review of the deed, that'll probably be designated residential or, because it looks like there's all residential ownership here.
It's 40, it's 40, yeah, they're all 40.
Then they, then they wouldn't, then they wouldn't be G O anymore.
Yeah.
You understand that?
Yes.
Yes, we just want
We don't care about G O, any of that, because we just, you know, really, you know, never was really used for any, any business, really, basically, since I owned it, really. Yeah, well, it wasn't a business, he didn't have people coming.
There was issues there, like Paul said, with the trucks.
That was, that was, we were about leasing, we had to stay, and I
That's fine.
I had a tension, I really thought I didn't really know what I bought. The old, the street was
We didn't know what was just in the board's office.
Right, we didn't have, I was confused with the whole thing, my niece made the place, I said, she could stay there, and then it came with the CEO, and I had no, I had a commercial, or should I sell this place? And you didn't want to sell it because you, you remember that part?
Sure, absolutely, no problem.
So that's what it was, confused me.
Well, like I said, she's not changing her footprint, so we did not, this pre-identification. We spoke, I spoke about this with the engineers and with the solicitor, and we did not require a, you know, a major site plan or anything because nothing's being changed, and what they're trying to do is in concert with the other properties in the surrounding area. It's a, it's a 40-foot frontage, and most of the surrounding properties are in concert with that. We do have all street parking for, you know, one-hand cars, which is what we require for residential. It is an R1 zone already, so we didn't think, we needed to have Mr. Pett's office do a review letter or anything, things like that. So are there any other comments from Mr. Crick? Do you have anything else?
No, I have no comments, thanks.
But Rowan?
No? In the front of that building, is the, besides the driveway, is the other part, is that allowed to be used for parking? It's all concrete?
Concrete, yeah, it's all, I mean, it's a drive, it's
So it's not considered a front lawn?
Well, it would be a front yard per se, but most of your dwellings had park, their driveways are parked.
Yeah, this is the whole front.
There are a lot of people who do have the concrete front doors, I've seen that, you know, I have the rest around the back and sides.
There is some grass up on.
Yeah, it's solid.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? All right, well, Mr. Rowan?
For the public?
Yeah. Okay, anyone wishing to speak on this application, this application only, in the public, please come forward and state your name and address. Hear from you.
St. Noah.
Motion to the mayor, Mr. Dickinson?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gushen, public portion is still.
Yes, what the board will be voting on tonight is the applicant's request to, for a use variance at Nine Harding Avenue to permit a residential use for a property that's currently in a general office zone. One, the board is familiar with the requirements of a use variance and the testimony that must be provided, and one consideration is, is there a negative impact on our existing zoning ordinance? One of the things that you can consider is the nature of the existing neighborhood. It appears that the nature of this existing neighborhood is residential in nature, so I think you can base your approval if that's what the board wishes. To grant you the use variance is it coincide with the existing use that's already there? So there's no deviation, and I don't see any significant impact to the zoning law ordinance.
Okay, with that, entertain a motion to grant the variance, or votes, Rowan? Motion on the floor?
I'm making the motion.
Mr. Fullerton, second of Mr. Pachowski, roll call, please.
Lee Hammer.
Yes.
Dickinson.
Yes.
Alberly.
Yes.
Gushen.
Yes.
Pachowski.
Yes.
Fullerton.
Yes.
Daley.
Yes.
Okay, Rowan, nice to meet you guys, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday. Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Hey, the, the application for Garafalo hasn't been tabled, so I guess we hear back from them that the application was incomplete, so have we rescheduled that, June? Yes. Has Garafalo been scheduled yet for June or?
Severe overhaul, 14, you got the report?
Sir, I didn't have the vote of the meeting, hang on a second. I'm just trying to clarify something, so. Okay, yeah, please, okay, so just for everyone's notification, Garafalo will not be heard today because the application was being incomplete by the solicitor and the engineer. That will be scheduled once we get everything in on the matter, and they have to be, to everyone within, obviously, 14 days for review. I have really nothing to go over on my report. I will briefly just go through, we did have a short meeting, about maybe an hour and a half, last Thursday night, December 1st, and it was three members of council and myself and Mr. Opely, and we are beginning to talk about what we're trying to do to revitalize the Black Horse Pike, and we did not have Mr. Bach present, so we were just kind of talking about how the different zones might be changed or enhanced to try to revitalize the Black Horse Pike. Right now, it's strictly kind of a, an idea type of thing. When we get to the point where we're going to be making recommendations, we'll, everything will come through the planning board. Mr. Bach has a planner in place that's going to be looking at all this and giving us their ideas, and again, we're going to be overlaying the tax map as it, as it sits now, to try to see what would be beneficial, to try to get rid of some of the blighting on the Black Horse Pike, try to fill some of those properties, maybe try to do a little something on the Black Horse Pike, between Black Horse Pike and the bike path, it's a nice area, it's a nice, a nice natural buffer for us. They wanted to put some different kinds of properties in, in areas that are not now able to have those type of commercial properties. So again, as we get a little bit more mature into the, the discussions, everything will, of course, come before this board, and just going to go through the planner, and then as we decide we want to change the master plan, that'll come through here, so it's going to be a long process, something's going to be quick, and we don't want to rush it. We, we don't want to be hasty, we want to think, think everything out and do what's best for the town, and really try to make it, make it appealing for people to come into town, you know, with, with some new businesses and some, and some new ideas, with, you know, give them some tax breaks and different things, so that's what we discussed on December 1st.
Sure.
No, no, just, yeah, we're not doing anything to the master plan. We've discussed it with Mr. Rowan as far as council is concerned, under the sunshine wall, so long as there's three or fewer people from any, any board, and, Mr. Rowan, I'll, I'll refer to you.
Yeah, as long as there's only three, no, now, you couldn't have three complaining or three from the governmental body, but you won't together, that would be a violation, but as long as you're talking three or less, it's not a violation of the statute. And typically what happens is when the township does do a master plan, which is probably an incorporated economic redevelopment area along the Black Horse Pike, their planner will present it to the council, and then they'll send it to us, which at that time will publish it, and it'll need to get the input of the public regarding what our suggestions are or, you know, what our concerns are.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Everybody understand that? So just wanted to bring your vote to speed with that. And that's the end of my report. Any old business we have to go over? No. Communications, June? Everything's good? Good to walk through at this point in time? I will open up the meeting to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, please call to the microphone, state your name and your address, and we happy to hear from you. You're on.
Severe overhaul, 14, Chef Gilford, Runway.
We help you, sir.
It never, never happened to do this before. I guess we were green at it, and, and we were told what to do right up to the end, and did everything we were told. I just don't understand why it's not complete, that we did everything that we told.
Well, I'm not sure who told you to do what, but I will
Well, we talked to many a people. You want to tell them who we talked to?
Well, it doesn't really matter, I'm just, it doesn't really matter, I mean, I just
And I thought everything was complete, and we came today to hear this out, because I do have a tenant that's waiting to get in there.
Yeah, well, we, we, I believe, June, what, did you send notification?
Well, I had called her when I got the email that it was incomplete.
Yeah, we had, we had not received anything that we needed. Just to give you an idea of what needs to transpire, every member of the board has to have, in other words, this is, this is Wawa's package, okay? Whatever we need has to be in our hands no less than 14 days prior to the meeting, okay? So Mr. Pett's office has to have that in his hands to do a review letter for me, on the board. Mr. Rowan has to have his hands to do any review that we need the solicitor to do, and we have to have it in our hands so that we can, if we choose to go and visit the property and take a look and try to ascertain what it is you're trying to do, and then we can certainly speak, you know, more intelligently than if someone, that's why we don't do any informals, you can't just come in here formally and say, well, what do you think? We don't do that.
Yeah, right, that's why I'm shocked, because I thought I did make everything on time, and I was, except for all the green cards that I got back, I just got several more back the other day that I was bringing, but everything, everything was supposed to have been put in on time.
Yeah, everything has, everything needs to go through, June Elkin, she's, she's the secretary, so she has to receive everything, and then it's, it's up to her to distribute it out to, you know, the solicitor and out to the, the planning board engineer and to the members.
And we were here to pay up the deadline and turn everything in, and we thought we were all on time.
What you're going to need, Mr. Garafalo, for what you're attempting to do, I think you're in general office now, and going, you're going to commercial, you're probably going to need a site plan showing all street parking.
Yes.
You really should, what I would suggest is you, and you're not required to, by statute, but you may want to speak, get legal advice to exactly what you're going to need to approve this type of use variance.
Believe me, if I'd known I was going to go through all of this, I'd have got the legal advice in the beginning.
Yeah, it really, you may need some, see, because you're going from a general office into more of an intense use commercial. The last one we had was going from really a general office to a lesser u, a use that was already commensurate with
So it was less of an impact, less of an impact.
So it was a lesser impact. What you're doing is more of an impact, so there's certain other things that the board and the engineer have to review to make sure that that impact doesn't affect the neighbors.
Now I find out just what I have to do to get it in on time so that we can
Well, unfortunately, I can't give you a legal advice because I represent them.
Yeah, I would, I would consult the attorney, and then
Yeah, we talked to you on the phone.
Yeah, and I told you, you should get
Yeah, get the attorney.
You should maybe get legal advice.
Yeah, because what you're going to need to do, sir, if, just for your indication, when I want to use variance like this, when you're, when you're going pretty much from office to almost like a commercial type of thing, we're going to want to look at a site plan because, and, and the first piece of this, we're going to, we're going to bifurcate the application, so if, if you don't get the use variance, then you're not going to have a hearing on the site plan approval, because without the use variance, the site plan is, is null, nothing. So what you're going to want to do, you're going to want to have a site plan in place so that we have the benefit of having that site plan in our hand 14 days before the meeting, so we can all visit the property if we deem that necessary, so Mr. Pett's office can give us a review letter, which is something, the review letter will basically say, okay, Mr. Garafalo needs bulk variance to do A, B, C, and D, he is setback, is, is A, B, and C, it needs to be this, he needs a variance for that. That's where the site plan comes in, okay?
Is that mean the site plan I gave wasn't
No, that's, that's a survey.
That's a survey.
That's a survey, yeah. And to do a site plan, you're probably going to need the services of an engineer, all right? So an engineer would really, I'd probably do you better good than even an attorney, because they're going to say, well, how many square feet are used for commercial? That triggers how many off-street parking spaces you need. This board, they don't know how many square feet you're going to dedicate to the, to the training room or, or whatever. So all those that you're intended uses want to trigger other things
That, that
Yeah, it, it is.
Yeah, sure, I mean, it's, it's one of those things where without all those pieces in place, we can't make an educated decision as, as to what's going to transpire, and we're not going to act on something until we know exactly how it's going to impact the town. That's what our job is, is to do that.
I was under the understanding it was a laundry van. I was going to open it up as a laundry van. They said I couldn't even do that, because it was closed, and now it's offices or something like that, they changed the whole
guide you down these paths because there, there, there's a lot more to it than just coming in and saying, here's a picture of what I want to do. That's, that's just not how we, we can, we can do that kind of stuff. And we're here to help you. June is available.
I'm sure you have some businesses.
Absolutely.
Home seek business is closed. I mean, I know you just talked.
They recommended to you to withdraw the, the petition?
Oh.
Yeah, okay, I would withdraw because you're going to have to renotice.
Right, you've got to be noticed.
All right, in other words, renotice all the people because you're going to have new plans.
It's not a form or else.
Yeah. I mean, if you wanted to, they're telling you, you know, to, and I would recommend maybe withdraw this petition, start again, because if they acted on this petition and they deny you.
You're done.
You're done, you can't come back.
Yeah, you don't want to do that.
You can't come back a second time, it's, so.
Seek legal advice.
Yeah, I would merely get legal, maybe talk to an engineer.
And if, if the applicant's a corporation too, you're going to need to be represented by the attorney.
Yes, it is. It's not, it's just in your name. But then an engineer, at a minimum, you're going to need an engineer.
Yeah, and you can have your engineer call our office. I mean, you know, really what we need is some kind of site plan, an idea of like parking, what the parking demand is, where the people are going to park, how they're going to get access to the site. You're going to, he's going to have to look at things like handicap accessibility, things like that, handicap parking spaces, impacts to drainage, if, if you are expanding the parking lot to provide more parking. So there's a lot of thought that has to go into the preparation of a site plan, thinking about your business and what the needs of the business are. How many parking spaces do I need? Do I have enough on the site? Maybe I don't. Now, do I need to expand my parking lot to add a couple more spaces? These are the types of things. Or do you want to seek a variance for parking? And your engineer will be able to, to review our coordinates, go through and figure out what the requirements are of the zone that you're in based on the use that you're proposing and will be able to identify these bulk variances for you in addition to the use variance that you're definitely going to need. Now, we don't know if you need a bulk variance or not at this point without the benefit of the site plan, but these are the types of things that your engineer will help us out in.
Big job.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's not, it's not.
It's a huge turn in your apartments.
No, it's not, it's not a big job.
No, really, it's really not that, it, it, it sounds daunting, but it, it truly isn't. It's just a matter of things have to be done in a certain way.
People know what they have to do.
I'm sorry?
People know what they have to do.
Yeah, and, and an engineer will, an engineer will know, honestly, they, they've been down the road many times, you're not trying to, you know, build the Empire State Building, but what you're trying to do, we're going to, and also when you come in, if you are granted the use variance, the board is going to ask you things about what are your hours[1582.41]